Airways planning. Oh, now it started. I'd like to call to order. Airway Heights Planning Commissioners Meeting, August tenth, two thousand twenty-two, at six oh. Six oh nine P M. I'll start with the roll call. Commissioner Cal, present. Commissioner Mark.
Here, present.
Present Commissioner Angelina. And then Commissioner Stephanie. So we're gonna wait for them to join in. If they don't join in, we love to probably. Cannot move forward to the other portion of the meeting, right? Or can we do that?
You can move forward with the meeting. We just would not do any action items like approval of the agenda or approval of minutes.
Okay, I agree with that, okay. So I guess, based on attendees tonight, I would like to, we can do the pledge of allegiance, right?
Yes.
Let's do that. Ready? I pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation. Under God, indivisible, liberty being just for all.
So what I'll do is I will move straight to the workshop. The workshop A is Planning Commissioner Recruitment Application and Interview Process. So I think staff is presenting that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we just quickly wanted to to go over the process in which you guys would go through to. Replace a vacant seat which you currently have. As you know by now, Hank Bynaker is now on the City Council. And has resigned from the Planning Commission. So really briefly. The City Council has a responsibility to fill that vacancy. We would recommend opening up a period to accept applications for the Planning Commission. I would recommend some time between following this meeting, I guess. And ending with the the next Planning Commission meeting if the Planning Commission would like to. Dedicate some time to speaking to the applicants before and maybe possibly right making a recommendation to the City Council. Again, the Planning Commission cannot appoint the Planning Commission member, the City Council can, but you can make a recommendation to the City Council. Hank was a resident of Airway Heights, which we were just being a little bit off camera, but there is a residency requirement for three members of the five-member Planning Commission to be residents. Of the city of Airway Heights, so we would have to find someone who is a resident of the city of Airway Heights. Currently, we have one applicant who I have not confirmed is still interested, but submitted. An application a couple of months ago to the Planning Commission. She is a resident of the city of Airway Heights. We have a member of the Parks Board who has expressed interest in joining the Planning Commission. He is a resident in the city of Airway Heights, and we've had two applicants that did not. Get placed on the City Council from the City Council sessions last month, who I have spoken to both of them. They are both interested. In joining the planning commission. So as of right now, there's potentially four candidates, but we would like to advertise and reach out to some additional candidates to hopefully get you. Get the Planning Commission a good group to potentially interview and make a recommendation to the City Council. So if you have any questions. Both Heather and myself can can sort of walk you through the process.
Hey, Cal.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna ask you, Cal, the the last time we did this, it got really convoluted because none of us on our end knew what to do. You and I both know we'll be at this this thing. Should we just set up like maybe a couple of questions that we just ask standard and then just get feedback from them and go from there instead of. Being being a little confused like we were last time?
No, I agree with that because last time I think the problem was nobody wanted to. Be responsible in picking one person versus the other. So if we can just ask a few questions and just introduce ourselves to them. That would be a great, great way to just talk to them rather than just reading the paperwork and forwarding it to the council, but we don't wanna, I don't think we wanna recommend anybody like last time. Right, Mike, Mark?
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I think we should just have a couple of standard questions that we ask, introduce ourselves and then. Let it go from there. You know, we don't need to make a recommendation as a body.
No, I agree with you on that statement because last time we tried to do this thing and it didn't work out.
So Heather, Zach, is there anything wrong with Hank and I, Cal and I coming up with a couple of questions that should we do it? In the meeting now or wait till after the meeting to do this?
I think that you certainly do it this evening and just remember that. If you have three, that's a quorum and and that would be a special meeting notice. So even by email communication, that's a special meeting. So. Today would be a great opportunity to to get a couple of questions and move forward.
So what question do you think would be good, Cal?
My, I tell you honestly, my first thing would be to be very clear that we got a commitment from whoever wants to take this position. Is to show up at the meetings because I I'm gonna be very honest with you. Last. Four months, I've seen this on and off that people are not coming to the meetings and and I I think that whoever we pick. Just, I hate to say, but Mark, you and I are eighty, ninety percent of the time here. So we want somebody who's committed, even Hank was committed. So. I I we have to be very careful how we question things, but I think attendance and commitment should be a a question in the sense that. Should be very openly put out to the person, you know?
No, I I completely agree. It's the frustrating part, you know, we got a a great city now as far as staff and everything, but. It sucks when we're down people. We have better dialogue when we have people there.
And we're we're equally as important as everybody else to make this happen. And if we keep doing this month to month, you know, we're just not setting a good example. So. That whoever the candidate we pick, I think the question should be that if you are. Picking this position, we expect a commitment. I don't know how to word that, but I have, we have to word it in such a way that we don't offend anybody.
But I would just.
Go ahead.
Cal, I would just simply ask, you know, why do you want to be on the Planning Commission? And how do you plan on ensuring that you're available and punctual to meetings and leave it at that? Let them explain.
No, that's a, that's how we worry then. And then the next question we should ask them is, we'd like to know their background and why, like you said again, why, why they wanna, why they want this position, you know?
Yeah, I think those two questions right there should lead to plenty of dialogue between the two groups. And give us or not give us, but give everybody an understanding of what's to be expected and what they wanna bring to the table and why they wanna bring it to the table. And hopefully the city will make the best decision.
Because, you know, a lot of people wanna take this position just for the sake of having a name that I'm a commissioner, but work needs to be done too, you know?
Yeah, no, I agree. So I feel like we got our two questions there then, right? Just ask the first one, why or not why, but.
Why you're interested?
On the planning commission? Yeah. And how do you plan on being punctual and ensuring that you'll be there?
And also we might wanna ask them that what is their vision as far as becoming a planning commissioner? What is their expectation, you know, from the from the position?
Yeah, true. You know, I feel like Hank, when we did that last interview, Hank talked a lot about what he saw and wanted to do.
Yes.
Yeah, so like that would be a good, a good question. What is their vision for everything?
I mean, there's not a lot you can ask, you know, I mean, it's not like a job interview, so. It's just to get a dialogue across the person and just kind of have some kind of communication. So they know who they're gonna work with, you're right?
Yes, true, true.
Because when I did mines, I just filled out a piece of paper, handed to the. Office, then they called me to the council meeting. They said, okay, and I came to the meeting, you know, and and nobody knew. Who I was, I just showed up, you know, and and this way we get an opportunity to see who's gonna work with us.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. So I feel like we have those two questions, right? The why do you wanna be on the Planning Commission? How will you ensure that you're available and punctual to meetings? And then what's your overall vision for the city? And your role in that?
That's good. I think that's enough.
So I I wanted to to ask a clarifying question if I could. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so again, you you had the right to provide a recommendation at the end of those interview sessions. Is that something you would be looking to do or would you rather not provide? Because you you can meet with the individuals and not, that's what you did last time, is you met with the individuals, but you did not provide a recommendation. So it was good for you, but it didn't really. Advise the City Council on what your thoughts were. I know that can be kind of awkward because you do not have executive privileges. To be on this kind of outside of this format, but it's just something to think about whether you have a goal. To recommend someone at the end of that session or not, and I I think that's something you should be thinking about before.
No, I I mean, Mark, I just wanna share this with you. I think we should leave the option. Just hypothetically say we have five candidates and we find one guy extremely outstanding and then we as commissioners feel like. This is the kind of guy we need on our team, then I should, we'll leave it open, but we don't wanna do it like last time that we we have to make a recommendation, you know? We wanna keep that option.
Yeah, no, I I I agree with you. I feel like there if there's somebody exceptional, we should be able to just agree as a group right then that this is who we would wanna recommend. And. I mean, otherwise, we can reserve that right to do like last time, correct, Zach, to where we didn't make a recommendation at all?
Yes, you yeah, so no recommendation went last time and and I know that there was a little, some of the members that I spoke to didn't. They felt like they could have gone further with that and actually made their recommendation. So I just wanted to put it out there for you guys to consider that maybe. You know, think about that before you go in, have a plan, so.
Yeah, I think the last time too, one of the biggest issues that came up was we had, I think, two or three candidates that were outside the city. As residents and then it became extremely confusing on what we could even do. I'm I'm hoping that this next time we won't have that issue at all. You just named all the the four people that were residents, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I'm trying to make it clear that the the requirement is residency, so we're not getting several applicants that are that are not. Available for the positions.
Well, hopefully then, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna add that. The clarification here is that we provided the applicants to the council. Because we preprovided all applicants and both of the non-resident applicants last time were fairly insistent that they wanted to apply. And that they were hopeful that the City Council might consider modifying the roles to allow their, and that is why. We presented all of the applicants to the Plan Commission to the City Council.
Okay, and this time are we gonna allow that again, Heather? And if we are, can Cal and I just basically agree now? That should they say they're not a resident of the city, just stop it right then, thank them for their time and then move on? Because last time it became like on our end, like what are we supposed to do?
So if we can. Segue first a moment on this discussion. Back to this idea of. Minimum requirements in order to have the the best pool of candidates and what that would require. In modifying the ordinance for the Plan Commission. It's important to to think about that as a kind of a chicken and egg situation, so. If if we go, which we can, go forward with recruiting for resident only and. Make it very clear that we're all that we're taking application for residents and those are the only ones that we're gonna forward to the Plan Commission and City Council. We can certainly do that this time to eliminate the confusion. But if if you're interested in modifying the ordinance around who can apply. That would be something to consider. Is that something that you would like to discuss as a commission beforehand and recommend to the City Council before? Taking applications so that in this case. The residency requirement doesn't doesn't appear to have been a burden either last time or even for what. Zach has been able to ascertain from speaking to a couple of potential applicants. So we can, yes, we can clear this up and make sure that only applicants come to the Plan Commission. We will include the name of anybody. Otherwise, why, but we can make it really clear that these are the ones going through the process. But I have to pose the question, are are you wanting to go forward with the app with a resident only or?
I personally, Heather, I think that the more people, the better. So I think opening that third position to outside the city resident would be very beneficial. I know the two people that were last time were very qualified. Could have brought a bunch of experience into that city, into the city, but that requirement just wasn't going to allow it. I I mean, I think that would be the best thing if City Council doesn't see that as appropriate, then respect them and then just interview residents only from that point on.
I was thinking, before we make go that route, just a feedback from staff. If we decide to go to the route where Mark is suggesting that we open up to non-residents, what is a timeframe that it takes that? That ordinance to change or to implement that change?
Well, as I indicated, I I think that if if it's at the Plan Commission, I would suggest that it appear on an agenda at next month's meeting so that. When the agenda is circulated for the for public. Review that it's clear that it's a topic on the this on the I have, you know, the agenda for the Plan Commission and discussion and you have a quorum. So that if you wanted to make the recommendation, you have a quorum to make that. Following that, it would take, depending on where the meeting fell in the month, it would take somewhere between two and three weeks. To get a ordinance change. Decided upon by the City Council. So you're really talking about an additional two months. From now to change the composition of the Plan Commission.
Mark, I would just suggest that maybe the this vacant seat, we just take it from the residents this time. And in the same time, we also put it on the next agenda to see if we can recommend or decide amongst ourselves. To change that ordinance to non-residents.
I hundred percent agree.
Because I can't really do that. Go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think I absolutely can do that. I think that's a great idea. I would, I would make one suggestion, which is to consider. If it's not a resident, what relationship is that Plan Commission member to Airway Heights? What is? What is going to bring a person into that role that's going to? Have a commitment to the city and and I would say you probably wanna consider. Broadening it to, so not just anybody, but say somebody within Spokane County. And potentially talk about somebody who has a relationship to the city, which could be a business owner, which both of you are. Or in, you know, a long time. In employee, you know, I'm trying to think, you know, like a school teacher. I'm just trying to think of some ways that you might wanna consider that this person. Would have an ongoing commitment to the city. Instead of just, you know, anybody as a as an applicant and removing the residency requirement. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense, Heather. Maybe you receive mail or spend more than seventy-five percent of your time?
Yeah, well, I I wanted, it's, it should be up on the screen right now, but I just wanted you guys to know what the language is currently. And and this, again, this is something, if you're gonna change it, you should think about what you're gonna change it to instead of just changing the number, because currently. The Planning Commission shall consist of five members. Members of the Planning Commission shall either be residents of or own property in Spokane County with at least three. Members residing within the city of Airway Heights. So that's your requirement right there. So just to give you.
I'm suggesting, yeah, no, thank you for showing that, Zach. I'm suggesting that you, if you're gonna change it from a resident, that there. Be some kind of relationship. So in addition to owning property, do they own a business? So I mean, just kind of, what is that? Commitment they have in the future to the city?
Because if you change it to at least two members, that puts a third one, but who knows, we might have the same problem again, I guess.
Well, I mean, the easiest change there is just to change the three to two, but the the thing to think about is the members of the Planning Commission shall either be residents. Of or own property in Spokane County. So that's something you have some flexibility if you wanna make that a little more specific, because I think what Heather's looking at. Or less.
The question to, oh, go ahead, Zach, sorry.
Oh, I'm just saying, or less specific. If if. I like the idea of discussing how this person may interact with the city a little more specifically than what it is now, so.
But, you know, just to, since we're having a discussion, I think it's important to understand. That when they put a language like this and say at least three people should be from the city. So when you put language like that, what is the intention? Is that the majority of the members are from the city? Is there a reason behind that or or that's just? A choice?
I would think so, and here's, here's the base. I think that there's some. Probably background that a resident should have. A weighted say in in recommendations that are made. And so that's what this speaks to me is that the composition. With the majority of the Plan Commission as a resident versus a non-resident. So. The difficulty, as we know from the Arts Commission, had been recruitment of people with with, you know. Seven different categories of. Potential. Qualification that a majority of them needed to be residents and it was incredibly difficult to fill that. While we did get a lot of residents, I think. Well over a third, not quite a half of the eventual applicants for residents. The specificity made it difficult to fill those roles. So in this case, I I think it's the thought that that as a resident, you live here and that you should have. A strong voice as part of that, the commission, but on the other hand, if you can think of other ways that somebody. Who is part of the community and define how they're part of the community. To to take on a role in the Plan Commission so that that idea that that the voice of Airway Heights is still heard. I think you could achieve a similar potency.
What would happen? Well, go ahead, Mark.
So I'm just hypothetically, it could be worded. The members must have a significant interest in Airway Heights by whatever definition. And then that's how it's chose, not a member or not a, sorry, member, not a resident of the city or county. So thinking like the teacher aspect here, you spend a significant amount of your time in the spot doing a thing for the community. You're invested in that community. But you're not a resident, you're, I don't know, down there in Medical Lake. Five people like that could be great on the board because they do have our commission because they do have. A significant interest in the community. I know I don't live in the community, but I love that community and will do the best that I can for that community because it's where I go and make my money every single day. And. I want to see the community grow. I I know a bunch of people would feel the same way.
Well, I would, you know, you can certainly do that. I think it's gonna be hard to define or that or make a decision if someone has a significant. Interest in the community because it's it's very subjective, but we can go through and look at some other types of commissions and see what type of that. Roles that are there. It's very unusual, to be honest with you, Mark, to have an official board. Of a local community that doesn't require a hundred percent of its members to be residents. But there are the ones that I have seen. Very much have been included very specific language like they own property in the city. They own a business in the city or they are employed by a company within the city. Those are the three. That I've seen that are pretty specific. So that I get your school teacher. Example or my school teacher example, like they're they're employed at Sunset Elementary. They're they're employed by by somebody within the city. That might be a way to do it, so it's not quite so subjective.
Okay. Honestly, the way you phrased it right there discovered everybody that I would think about.
But suppose you, you, this is Cal, suppose if you pick an open thing and you let anybody from Spokane County come. And down the year, let's say a couple of years from now, can a resident come back and challenge that because nobody from the city is on the planning commissioner?
No, if the ordinance defines what the roles are, like owner, resident. Employer or employee, you know, as long as that, you know, those people can meet those roles, then then it's valid in the ordinance. What would happen is if if. Residents became concerned that there wasn't enough. Local in-city representation, they could always ask the council to change the ordinance again and change it back to to a resident reform.
Well, I just wanted to highlight the other section here to give you guys an idea of what the qualification requirement is. So right now, the memberships of Planning Commission shall be consistent of individuals who have an interest in planning, land use, transportation, capital, infrastructure, building. And landscape design as evidenced by training, experience, or interest in the city of Airway Heights. So. If you are going to open it up to non-Airway Heights residents, that's something you may wanna think about is tightening up the the qualification standards too. Just saying, it's it's something you may wanna think about. It's 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 interesting when thinking about the Arts Commission, we had very specific qualifications for each of the positions. And the Planning Commission has has pretty loose standards in that aspect, but anyway, I just wanted to point it out for you guys to know, so.
I guess we can discuss this in the next.
What would be an example, Zach?
I mean, with with that, if you were gonna open up to non-residents, you may wanna focus. On, you know, individuals, engineers, landscape designers, transportation, land use, like the. The Arts Commission is what I'm thinking of. So the they have specific roles assigned to specific seats. So one seat has to be someone who's who's in some way involved in. In real estate or landscape design, I believe, and Heather, you you know the specifics of this a little better than I do. But they they have specific roles kind of targeted for these specific seats, so they have a range of expertise being represented on the council.
Fair enough. I remember what, yeah, I know what you're talking about now.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, if I if I go back in my memory and I think about in the last five, six years. What I've seen is in the beginning, there were. There were majority commissioners from Airway Heights and and looking back, most of those residents. Brought in a lot of interesting problems that the city had from perspective of them being in the city themselves. And they used to bring in problems that they saw on the roads, whatever it is. And then last, I think, last couple of years. We don't hear specific issues. I think when Mark used to be a resident of the city, we used to hear from Mark. Concerning a lot of stuff that was around him, right, Mark?
Yeah, but to be fair, we had COVID and I've made some life changes since doing different things and. I'm not around in Airway Heights like driving it like I used to be either, though. So, but I know what you're. But I know what you're getting at. I I did have that firsthand experience living in the city and working in the city. You see everything.
I just wanna be careful that we don't lose. Something to gain something, and I think. Having a local residence who is vocal and interested and. Like I said, shows up to the meetings, it could be a plus, and five members being. Like from Medical Lake or some other place. We might miss that, so we just got to be very careful how we decide this.
Well, Cal, though, in to like maybe just look at it from a different perspective. We're not choosing this person. The city council is, and all of them have to be residents. So they'll be making the best decision regardless of the resident of this person before them. And they are residents. They live there, so it's not like they're not representing the residents of the city.
No, I'm saying that, oh, you mean the people that work here, for example, right?
Well, no, I'm saying if, so if we were to put this proposal before the city council so they can redo this um wording. And it made it open to, like, it got rid of the residency requirement and did what Heather was saying, where we just, if you. Live, own a business, or are employed, or employer in this uh. Area, then you can be on the commi- or you can be on the commission. That's the requirements. And let's say we go through six people. And um. We recommend a person to the city council that's not a resident of the city. The city council is residents and they. Could say, no, we want to see more people. We want to see somebody else from the city. And ask us to like, look at other people, or they could make a selection on their own, but they are residents of the city, so it's not like. The planning commission itself that's made up of members that aren't residents. Are choosing the planning commission members. The city is ultimately, the city council is.
No, I'm just listening, yeah. No, I mean, I'm just, this is just a discussion, so. Whatever we discuss, we can. Decide later, but I just wanna bring up all the points that we can think of.
No, I think it's a very fair, fair thing to bring up because you do want that local representation. They know it better than anybody else living in it and working in it daily, or maybe not working, but at least living in it. I'm just saying, though. Recruitment has been one of the biggest issues for any of these commissions and stuff in Airway Heights, just seeing it from that. That level of watching how turnover happens, and it's difficult to get spots filled. If just changing. The wording of the the qualifications or the requirements can get more people in front, I think that's better for everybody. The city council is chosen by the residents and, you know, they're gonna make the best decision regardless for the city.
But if the ordinance is open, doesn't, wouldn't that mean the council will just pick? Anybody that's missed that criteria instead of looking at the residency of the city?
Yeah, they absolutely could appoint five people that weren't residents of the city. But I would just look at it as they're, they are residents, so. The residents of the city decided to choose five non-residents to make up the planning commission. And then if the voting population of Airway Heights didn't like that city council's decision, well, they would change that. We're not selecting anybody. I just would like to see more people in front, so we can hopefully get more participation in the city.
No, you have a valid, valid concern there, so. It's not something that, you know. We, I don't, I think it's important. Going forward, it's important how we set this up now. Because the city is growing, staff is busy. We need people on the team. That are gonna bring value to the city.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I'll um. I'll open up a a window and send some emails out and posts on Facebook and stuff, letting people know that. You know, we're accepting applications for an open planning commission seat. There is a residency requirement. Uh, and then at next month's meeting, we'll do a workshop to discuss the specifics. Of the language that we'd like to change, and then Heather and I can get the ball rolling on uh, on changing the ordinance. Is is that correct? Did I summarize that very well?
Yes.
Yes, but I think in Cal, you could, you can tell me otherwise. We would like to interview people that are not residents as well, just in case something doesn't go through, another seat opens. But it's gonna be a minute before we can actually get to doing it. That maybe the language in the code changes.
Well, we right now want to open up, go ahead, Zach.
Oh, I was I was just gonna say, I'll, I mean, I'll include all um, applications and invite all our applicants that we receive, whether they're residents or not, so.
Mark, you just want to see what's out there, right?
Yes, because like, you know, if we get ten applicants, five Airway Heights residents, five non-Airway Heights residents, great. And if we want to sit there, our staff recommends that we. Interview and talk to six of them and then, you know, make our recommendation on to city council from there. And three are Airway Heights residents and three are not. Then we would have to let them know, you know, we have to choose from the residency here, but should something else change? Or another position becomes available. We've already gone through the whole process, interviewed and all that stuff. We could just make a recommendation right then.
Yeah, that's okay.
I mean, if, but if you want to keep it to just local residents, I mean, I'm fine with that either way. I just. I just don't want to be confused when we do do these these.
Well, I was thinking that just, we we need a, we need the vacancy filled up. So that we don't have the same problem that we have tonight. And I think in in essence of time. And and that, we should just limit this uh, the D position. Just to the area high resident, and then let's see, let's make the change. To the uh. The residency requirement, and then take the non-resident uh, applications.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
We don't want to give somebody a false hope that there is a position open for them.
Yeah, no, fair enough, yeah, fair enough, Cal.
But I do. Look at uh, what you said. It is important.
Yeah, no, I, you you're you're right. It'll save on the time and everything, too.
Well, yeah, we'll uh, we'll circle back around to this next one.
We will finish with, are you finished with the planning commissioner recruitment and application process stuff?
Um, yeah. Yeah, we're ready to move on if you are.
And we could move on to workshop B. Grant updates, Craig Road and US two grants.
Well, uh, we've been super busy. Looking for money, um, and uh, I, we've been very lucky. We've actually been. Extremely lucky to receive multiple grants in the last twelve months, and there was a quick and dry sell before this. Um, on funding, so. This was actually, uh, this is a. A project that we applied for in twenty twenty. Uh, from. Uh, the Transportation Improvement Board. Uh, which does a variety of grants, so the Safe Routes to School is one of them. Um, this was a pet and bike safety. Grants, and we did not actually get picked the first time around, but the state legislature. Set aside additional funds uh, in the twenty twenty budget, and they identified that there were qualifying applications that. That T I B um, had on file in the Washington State Department of Transportation that they were gonna fund them, so we were notified. That they were gonna fund this project, so this is a project that uh, has a value of a million dollars. And it will place a separated sidewalk. On Craig Road from the roundabout, which will be built at US two and Craig Road. And it will go north all the way to Sixth Avenue. We are currently working with the Spokane Tribe, because the property on the image on your screen immediately on the upward side. Of this image is the Spokane Tribe, and. Under an E I S, an environmental impact statement that was completed in two thousand twelve. The tribe is required to uh, do street improvements on their side of Craig Road. At a certain point of development, uh, which happens to be occurring now, which is that they. Uh, completed their second phase of casino expansion, and they're now working on the hotel. So, uh, we are basically saying, hey, you know, you have this requirement under the I S to do. All of the roadway improvements from the center of the light, center of the roadway line over. To include the roadway, the curb, the swale area and sidewalk, we now have a grant for. Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To do that, um, we can put that towards your project. We would like to see you go forward and complete. Um, the remainder of those improvements, so we're working with them on that, so we can see at least half of the road. If if everything works out right, in addition to the grant. Now, the grant cannot be used for a new paving on Craig, which it sorely needs. Um, but it would create a separated sidewalk. In that area, and so the timing for this project. Would be, I believe, uh, by twenty twenty four would have to be installed. Uh, which is actually great timing because the tribe just completed the roundabout design. For Craig Road and US two, so they're uh, be giving that to Washington State Department of Transportation for final. Approval, um, Airway Heights will participate in the right-of-way acquisition that will be needed, which is highlighted in blue. On this image, and it will also begin construction next year, so these two projects are lining up really well. Um, and you're excited about it because it's gonna get much-needed improvements on Craig Road, and why is Craig Road important? Well, uh, Chief School District bought a five-acre site at the edge of the city limits on the far north side of Craig Road, and they will be. Uh, building an elementary school there. And the vast majority of our residential uses are all located in this northwest quadrant of the city, so. The idea that um, we're gonna be working on installing pedestrian and bicycle facilities, so people can get from the school site. And the residential area. Um, down US two uh, is an important one, particularly as we're working on. The other grants, um. That we received this year, which was for two million dollars. From Spokane Transit Authority, which was to complete Sixth Avenue, so the transit will come down Sixth Avenue. And go down Craig Road, will hit this roundabout and go back on US two, so these projects are really. Aligning, and that's intentional on our part, and we're applying is to kind of put all these pieces together, so. Super excited about this brand and potentially partnership with the Spokane Tribe. Any questions about this brand?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
It's good that we got the money.
We're very lucky we got the money. It hasn't been years, um, since we have gotten grant money. Uh, last year, we got a. Two and a half million dollar grant from T I B also, so we could build tenth avenue between. Hayford Road and Gertville. That was the first time that the city had gotten some grant funds in several years. All right, if we can move on to the next one. So if you remember, this is an image from the downtown. Excuse me, downtown plan. Uh, which was uh, how to. Uh, significantly improve the street state in our proposed downtown area between Lawson and Monstrom on US two. Uh, with the idea that investing in pedestrian safety and uh. A significant improvement in that area would help create a feel of a downtown, it would. Enhance safety for bicycles and pedestrians by slowing traffic, and it could be an incentive. For new brain businesses for investment. Uh, in that area, so we can have a true downtown, so. We applied for design dollars, engineering and design dollars. From the Spokane Regional Transit, excuse me, Spokane Regional Transportation. Organization, S R T C. Uh, which is using some federal dollars that they received to do a design. Now, why are we doing design versus construction? Many grants do not pay for design. They want for the local entity to do the design and have what's called shovel-ready projects, in other words, all the engineering is done. And these state and federal organizations are giving money to just build it. So, um, this is a very expensive design because it would include two roundabouts, and it would uh, be. Modifying. The right-of-way located north and south of US two, as well as creating a um. Significant pedestrian crossing at King Street. Now, if you remember from our pedestrian. Demonstration project last summer, King Street is gonna be our pedestrian border connecting Sixth Avenue, so again. Thinking about the alignment of all these projects and how we can start to fill the pieces in. This is an artistic rendering, it's not what it will be in final design. Uh, another element of why there's significant cost in design is because, you know, all of us have been in Yokes parking lot, or maybe had dinner at Solitide. And you know, there's a big grade difference between US two and those adjoining properties, and so we have to deal with things like stormwater drainage. How to deal with the parking um, on the north side. Um, as well as how traffic's gonna flow in and out of of those areas in front of those businesses. So, uh, this project will start next year. And we'll be doing a large uh, public engagement process. With businesses and residents to help us vision what this will actually look like, but it will have components. Like pedestrian and bicycle facilities, landscaping. Uh, a new transit area as well as, again, modifying um, how. The parking is located on the north from the south side of this area. So, um, super excited, it's the first piece, and I just looked at it, it's a first piece for getting construction dollars. I just looked at a grant last week that had we have this design, we could have applied for those federal dollars, we would have been. It was a grant for. Communities um, that have military facilities. Um, we would have, we would have qualified, we could have applied. Of course, we're competing nationally for federal dollars, but. Uh, just gives an example of, we come across opportunities, but. They're construction only. Are there any questions about this grant and the overall project?
Just wanted to ask you a general question as far as roundabouts that concern US two. Is there something, Washington State? Transportation is a problem, or would they have a problem with that because of the speed or is something that? They don't object to?
Washington State Department of Transportation endorses roundabouts rather than traffic lights when there's enough right of way available to do that because. The accidents, um. That occur are less life-threatening, and there's less actual property damage and physical damages as a result of accidents. Um, versus uh, light-controlled intersections, because you can imagine, you know, rear ends and boning, um. So, yes, when the state went through last, or did a process of examining US two. As part of a strategy plan. They recommended roundabouts in several locations along US two. Why we're looking at uh, doing roundabouts here is number one. On Lawson. Washita needs to replace the existing life that's there. It's it's it's. It's too old, too antiquated, to continue to, you know, baby along. And they have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in budgeted money to replace that, and they've offered that to the city. As seed money for construction to build a roundabout now. A roundabout is probably closer to one point five million dollars, so it's not a lot of that money, but it it would be a start, certainly, and it can be important. Grant applications that we would make to other states' agencies or federal agencies that we could have that, you know. Partnership or or seed money there. Um, because it's a condensed um, block that our downtown plan identified as a being more pedestrian-oriented, the goal is to. Slow traffic down, increase safety, make it uh, so that people are. Feel more comfortable to cross in this area. The roundabouts, um, when designed properly can help. Mitigate the flow of traffic going through. That area, so, uh, yes, there's a lot of reasons why roundabouts are are very much being considered, and they are supported by Washita.
Thank you.
Um, I would just add that I'm looking at, I'm putting together. Um, I would just add that I'm looking at, I'm putting together another grant application. Um, it also is a, it's a state application to the Department of Commerce. That is specific to communities impacted by military installations and the grants is to mitigate the impacts of military installations. Um, and one of the qualifying areas is a community's reliance on, on military personnel. Um, from business, their business district and business. And so I'm looking at um whether or not we can put enough justification together to. Um, ask for a facade replacement or renovation grant program out of those dollars. That we can use in conjunction with this design that could be seed money, it would be, it would be a grant for business owners. Uh, to apply for to redo their facade and landscaping in front of their business, so I'm hoping that. Kind of pairing up some of these grants, if we're successful with the second grant, uh, we can start to change the face of, of our, our downtown area.
Finding grants is probably a full-time job, right?
It's, it's um not, but you know, it's fun, uh, it's fun to do it, because there's like periods of. And when applications are, are due, um, so it's not like year-round, but uh, yeah, it's, it's. It's a fun activity. But we just wanna give you an update, because you know, think we're working toward the goals of the plan and the downtown plan and we're, we're working to. Change the face of the airway nights in a positive way.
Nice.
Yeah, I have no questions.
Well, that concluded the update on the grants, um.
Thank you, Heather and Zach. I'll open up for commissioners' report, uh, there's only two of us, so Mark, if you wanna say something.
No, I, I don't have anything, Cal.
I just wanna thank you for your uh time and effort making the meetings, I appreciate that. And then uh, the other thing is Hank resigned to become a city council official last week, right? Yeah, I don't feel bad, I should have been an airway heights resident, you know. I've been on this board for five, six years and I see a lot of people move up. And I'm just stuck where I am. I was telling Zach that, you know, the other day, I said, hey, you know, I'd love to move to the next level, but I'm stuck.
I mean, I'm sure your work is appreciated regardless.
Thank you. I don't have anything. Go ahead, Mike.
I was just gonna say, I appreciate you, Cal.
I appreciate it, thank you, man. Makes me feel good. Uh, if no, there's no more commissioners' report, I will hand it over to staff for staff reports.
Do you wanna go or do you want me to go?
Uh, go ahead and go for Zach and then I'll, I'll just kinda give an update on the conflict.
Okay, um, as you guys know, the summer is uh our busy season, so we are busy with all sorts of different applications. We have multiple uh short and long plaid applications taking place at this time, we have multiple building applications taking place at this time, so. We are busy in that aspect. Uh, one of the additional projects I, I'm spending. A significant amount of time on is the uh, the rebranding project, which has to do with. Development of a new logo, a new website, uh, some stock photography and additional items such as uh. Developing the, a new set of forms for the city. Um, so I, I did send out a notice. Before the meeting uh to fill out the surveys, so please fill out the surveys. We're trying to get as much uh feedback as we possibly can, but um. We're hoping to have this project kind of wrapped up uh by the first of January, having a fully. Operational new website with new branding and uh we're really excited about it, but it's a, it's a pretty significant amount of work, so um. Yeah, and we're, we're keeping busy and that's keeping us extra busy, so, Heather?
Uh, great news, so we just found out today that the survey's only been out for about twenty-four hours and we already have forty. How many, forty? Forty-nine um responses.
Yeah.
Nice.
Hopefully, and hoping to keep the pace, so we'll see.
Uh, Zach is valiantly carrying all the water on this project, which includes meeting with every single department. What they need to take off the website, update and change as well as uh. Understanding the technical intricacies of how this is gonna really connect to other um. Uh, other websites, information links, et cetera, so it's a huge project and I'm super happy that. Zach is working on this, it's like I think of anybody who's more qualified.
Small town.
Yeah.
He's done a good job since he's been on the team as far as taking some of these uh things to the next level as far as. Information is concerned, you know.
Absolutely, he's also.
Taken the, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I said he's taking everybody else from a legacy to something modernized right now.
That's the goal, get it, at least get us up to the standards.
Nice, good, very, very nice.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, so I just wanted to touch bases on the conflict, uh, we are. Hopefully uh nearing completion of the preliminary draft, that's the work that's been occurring since the. Uh, planning commissioner city council made a preferred alternative recommendation, so we. Had worked on um some forecasting for residential, commercial, industrial and uses to help our. Utility consultants determine how to forecast water and sewer demand and transportation demands. Um, we've been working on civic complex plans, um, so there's been. A parallel engagement about to do about uh public safety or fire department, police department and courts in the short term or the long term as far as facilities. So we're still hopeful that we'll have a preliminary draft. Done by the end of this month, and so the, so tentatively, the goal. Uh, would be that we could have a draft review of the plan with the. Planning Commission potentially in September. And that we would do an open house with a public on the draft in September. Uh, which would be located at the recreation center. Uh, where we hope to capture, you know, people coming through, the folks invite people into that space. Uh, to experience the draft conflict. So uh, work continues, um, lots of discussions having to do with. How we evaluate where and when we're gonna grow and how we're gonna afford uh to grow, which is a pretty significant issue when it comes to things like. Their water and sewer. And uh, we do have participation, um, at least on those elements with both tribes, so that's really great. And very needed for us to ask your team. Uh, we need to put into play for the next six years, intentionally long range. Any questions about the conflict update?
No.
No.
Okay. Uh, let's see, I think we pretty much touched a lot of the pieces that we're working on, um, others mentioned that. We also have uh kind of begun a permit process improvement. For the city, so there've been um kind of some discussions about what can we do um. To streamline our permitting, uh, to allow also for over the counter permits. Um, and you know, what other improvements we could potentially put into the system to have. A competitive process to other agencies. So um, some early conversations we've had. With the council and administration that we're doing technology, so we're gonna be investing and putting our permit system in the cloud. Uh, we're also pursuing um being able to expand the use of credit cards, so that we be able to take. Significant years. Charges on credit cards, because right now people have to drop a check off and you'll check. Um, we're also doing presentations at the council about our, our various processes, and so this week. Uh, we did an overview of what planning does. And in the next couple of weeks, I'll be providing an overview of what building does and so forth of the other departments. So we may be hearing more about that over the coming months. And that's really.
Not to cut you, hey, you know, I wanted to ask you just a general question, I was thinking about it. One thing I've noticed in the area, there are a lot of distribution barrels popping up on the. McFarland and Amazon area. What is the reason behind that? Because I was, I, just a general question. Of interest, why all of a sudden there's seven buildings in the area? If anybody has any insights.
So there's an article, I mean, you can even Google it, um, which has to do with Amazon district, distribution. Um, and construction projects, so essentially when COVID hit, of course. Every entity that dealt with online delivery of uh products. Got um pretty overwhelmed, um, and. Most people, of course, pivoted to purchasing online, um, whether it was from Amazon or, or from some other entity. And so in particular, Amazon invested nationally. In uh distribution facilities and constructed or. Or will be leasing buildings constructed for them in order to accommodate significantly growing industry for them. So that, that's the predominant reason. The other part of it, in particular for Amazon was. During COVID, there were backlogs in, in delivery, so you, you know, since postal service and UPS. Couldn't handle all of the um increased demand and delivery, so Amazon. Embarked on a corporate philosophy that they were gonna take over local delivery. So the facility that built in Airway Heights on Mc, on McFarland. Is a first gen building along that line where. The facility over off of Hayford in I ninety. Is where the semi trucks bring in, you know, massive loads of materials. Then materials would be transferred over to the facility on McFarland as an example. And those are loaded into Amazon-owned vehicles. That then would do all of their own local deliveries. And they would, they would diminish their reliance on um United States Postal Service.
Thank you, I was just curious, all of a sudden, boom, boom, they're popping up everywhere.
Yeah, that's the big, that's the big thing is distribution warehouses in order to accommodate. All, all of the now, you know, purchased online and. You know, merchandise.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anybody have anything else?
Hey, Cal, so, go ahead, go ahead. When we get done here, do you mind sticking around for a minute?
Yeah, no problem, I can do that.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, if there's no further questions or objections. Or discussions, I'd like to agenda a meeting at seven twelve. Are we off the record?